The meeting is now called order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Yes, here.
Mr. Cancro. Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Hong. Mrs. Lax.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Seeler.
Here.
Mrs. Shaw.
Here.
President Simmons.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
(inaudible)
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted. The board office is located at 760 Route 18, East Brunswick, New Jersey. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News &amp; Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. And good evening, everyone. This is our last meeting of the school year, when it seems like yesterday we were announcing the first meeting of the school year. And because it is the last meeting, we have a whole lot of accommodations to give out tonight. So it's one of our better meetings, I guess, this year, tonight. We're going to start, and I'm going to ask the Board to, so we can streamline the process a little better, focus more attention on this evening's recipients. If I may have a motion for the resolutions one through 12.
Some move.
Motion by Mrs. Becker, second by Mrs. Shaw. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we've approved the resolutions, and now we're going to look at each one individually. I'm going to go up to the podium. I'm going to ask Mrs. Becker to join me in handing out some of these awards. Now, our first award this evening, or recognition, is, this is always bittersweet. It's our Board Representative. Ruthie, what a year. Every year, we think, we had the best rep this year, and we say this every single year, and you showed us that once again, you can continue to raise the level of someone who's been so interested in doing what you've done, keeping us posted on the high school. Sometimes we kind of felt like we were there. You have been an incredible representative. Your class should know how well represented they were by you. We're going to miss you like crazy here. And, you know, I think, I think you learned something. We certainly did, every meeting. And, you know, we wish you the best of luck at Rutgers when you start there in the fall.
I was going to say, Thursdays are like very open at Rutgers.
Yeah, I think, we're close by.
And she can stop in for a meeting or two.
Absolutely.
There you go.
I noticed, though, you have somebody with you who I don't recognize. So, did you want to make an introduction?
So, this is going to be next year's Board liaison, Kush Mather. I know him as a friend. So, he is an amazing friend, an amazing dancer, for all you that don't know. And I'm, I'm very, very, very confident in his abilities to take on this position.
Kush, you have a tough act to follow. I'm going to tell you that right now. But we look forward to having you start. And like I said, you're welcome to come over the summer, check out a couple of meetings. We're here. We have to work over the summer. Ruthie, come on up.
I might try to compete with him in dancing, everybody.
Uh-oh.
You go for it.
I have a little competition there.
Yeah? Oh, yes. I do have a resolution.
He doesn't need that elaborate costume, though.
Yes. So, I will read the resolution that we have, and it's, whereas Ruthie has served as a student rep for the Board since the 2016-17 school year, and whereas Ruthie has faithfully attended meetings, offered insight as a student of East Brunswick, and effectively communicated the Board's actions to her fellow students. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Ruthie for her time and service to our Board of Education. Congratulations. Thank you, Ruthie, for everything you've done. Next, we have our Parent/Teacher Association Representatives. Whereas our PTAs spend countless hours supporting our 11 schools and more than 8,000 students, contributing greatly to their school communities, and helping promote a positive school culture. And whereas our PTAs fundraise extensively so they may gift technology and playground equipment, fund mini-grants to teachers, provide scholarships, and so much more. And whereas the PTAs generously arrange for and fund special programs, authors and illustrators, music and dance, history and science assemblies, and workshops that enhance and enrich the learning environment for our students. And whereas all these, all of those involved in our PTAs are wonderful examples for our students, modeling good citizenship and the importance of doing one share to make the world a better place. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education gratefully acknowledges the incredible support of the PTAs and their dedicated service and devotion to students and staff. Further be it resolved, the East Brunswick Board of Education would like to extend a very special thank you to the President of the PTA Presidents' Council, Lindsay Dobrinsky, who has supported and encouraged the PTAs in all of their efforts. So this evening, we're going to congratulate and thank Jessica Logan, I'm sorry, I think he's gotten here, well Jessica Logan, who's not here this evening. Pat Checo. And our President of the PTA Presidents' Council, Lindsay Dobrinsky. Next is our 2017 Future Business Leaders of America, or FBLA. Whereas the New Jersey Future Business Leaders of America is a student organization helping to build important career and business leadership skills that are necessary in the workplace. And whereas East Brunswick High School's FBLA Club attended the New Jersey FBLA Spring Leadership Conference, an exciting conference that includes both valuable leadership workshops and challenging competitive events. And whereas the East Brunswick High School's FBLA Club did an excellent job competing in all areas with two first-place awards in the following categories. Impromptu speaking to, if I can get this right, Ashika Jalargan, and global business to Saraj Baxi. Let me get my, oh, here we go. I've got my paper here. All qualified to move on to the national competition. So, we're going to congratulate Andrew Chick, Aiden Andrew Chick Aiden. And Nicole Kenny, their advisor. And Caitlin Levlon, their second advisor. Next is our New Jersey Science Olympiad State Level in Meteorology. Whereas Churchill Junior High School students participated in the 2017 New Jersey Science Olympiad Competition, the Science Olympiad Competition provides an arena for students to engage in STEM learning and building activities. Students from teams to study a specific problem and then form teams and then compete at the regional and state level against their peers. Whereas two members of the Churchill Junior High School, Andrew Chen and Liliana Cantillo, placed first in their event Meteorology. And whereas these accomplishments attribute to the dedication and commitment of the students and staff have brought local and state recognition to their schools, the district, and the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends these students and their advisors for this outstanding achievement. Now we have Andrew Chen. And advisor Beth Logan Shobey. Next is our New Jersey Science Olympiad State Level, Fast Facts. Whereas Churchill Junior High School students participated in the 2017 New Jersey Science Olympiad Competition, the Science Olympiad Competition provides an arena for students to engage in STEM learning and building activities. Students form teams to study a specific problem and then compete at the regional and state level against their peers. And whereas two members of the Churchill Junior High School, Nikita Ayengar and Rothela Samadi, placed first in their event Fast Facts. And whereas these accomplishments attribute to the dedication and commitment of these students and staff have brought local and state recognition to their schools, the district, and the community. Now therefore be it resolved, the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends these students and their advisors for this outstanding achievement. Okay. Is Rothela Samadian? All right. And Nikita Ayengar is not here this evening. Advisor Beth Logan Strobe? Again. And advisor Alexandra Bartfield. Next is the Governor's School of Sciences at Drew University. Whereas East Brunswick High School juniors were selected to attend the New Jersey Governor's School of Sciences at Drew University, a unique summer residential program for academically talented students. And whereas these students will spend the summer at Drew University, this intensive summer program brings together some of New Jersey's most talented and motivated high school students in a challenging learning environment, exploring new avenues of knowledge and developing additional skills. And whereas this honor, a tribute to their hard work, dedication, and commitment, has brought local and state recognition to their school, the district, and the community. Now therefore be it resolved, the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends these students for this outstanding achievement. And congratulations to Brian Tong. Next is the New Jersey Governor's School for Engineering and Technology. Whereas the East Brunswick Junior High School junior, Daniel Like, was selected to attend the Governor's School of Engineering and Technology, a unique summer residential program for academically talented students. And whereas Daniel will spend one month during the summer at Rutgers University, this intensive summer program brings together some of New Jersey's most talented and motivated high school students in a challenging learning environment, exploring new avenues of knowledge and developing additional skills. And whereas this honor, a tribute to his hard work, dedication, and commitment, has brought local and state recognition to his school, the district, and the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Daniel for this outstanding achievement. Daniel. Next is our 2017 Rutgers Waxman Scholars. Whereas 22 East Brunswick High School students participating in the nationally recognized Rutgers Waxman Scholars Program, in which they focused on DNA sequence analysis of genes and have had their research published in the National Center for Biotechnology Information, NCBI database, which disseminates biomedical information for the better understanding of molecular processes affecting human health and disease. And whereas scientists from around the world will be accessing the published research of these students for their own research purposes. And whereas this accomplishment, a tribute to the students' hard work, dedication, and commitment, has brought local and state recognition to their, and national recognition to their school, the district, and the community. And now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends these students and their teacher for this outstanding achievement. And we will begin with Zane Becker. Teacher Anne Sinelli. Next is the Rutgers Model United Nations, and we have quite a few of you here for that. Whereas Rutgers Model United Nations is a four-day simulation where students represent different nations on a multitude of issues. This year's theme for the Rutgers Model UN 2017 was Global Disparies, with a particular emphasis on relating these disparities to the Sustainable Development Goals. And whereas the Rutgers Model UN experience gives students the opportunity to cultivate practical skills that will benefit them for the rest of their academic and professional lives, including public speaking, written and verbal communication, team building, critical thinking, and real-time problem solving. Whereas 77 East Brunswick High School students were among the approximately 1,000 students from Massachusetts, New York, New Jersey, California, and the Dominican Republic attending the Rutgers Model UN in New Brunswick. Students represented member nations of the United Nations, with East Brunswick representing Jordan, Turkey, and Kenya, along with multiple different positions on the advanced committees. The students did an exemplary job, winning numerous individual awards in committee, as well as the Best Delegation Award. And now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends these students and their teacher and advisors for this outstanding achievement. We will start with Aiden Andrew Chick. Okay, we got two more, so we're going to hold the flash. We have here, hold on, we have Simran Sedarangatni. And Vikas Dalal.
Maybe the first one next to the chair.
Yeah, why don't you take?
Take a third.
We're going to have to meet like.
Everybody, please that way.
Perfectly.
Wide lens.
Right.
Where is the names?
It's Kush.
Kusha girl, mother.
Is he here? No. We also want to recognize our new Board Rep Kush Mather, who, I see her on here, but did we not get a certificate for you for Model UN?
You get an extra special handshake.
You get to come up all by yourself, yeah.
You go, guys.
See, one of the drawbacks of sitting up here is that you get out of the limelight there when they're out there, but you get your own few minutes. So, there you go. Next is our 2017 New Jersey Science League Physics C. Whereas all public and private secondary schools in New Jersey are invited to participate in the New Jersey Science League, a competition that consists of four 50-minute written exams in seven content areas, starting in January and finishing in April. And whereas the East Brunswick High School physics team participated and placed first in the state in Physics C. And whereas two students also had the highest individual scores in the state among all students competing. And whereas this honor, a tribute to the students' motivation, determination, and commitment, has brought local and state recognition to East Brunswick High School, the district, and the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends these team members and their teacher for this outstanding achievement. We have Key Vincent Jorgensen. One of the individuals with the highest individual score, Brian Tong. And the other student with the highest individual score, Victor Zhang. And Diana Estep, their teacher. Next is New Jersey Science Olympiad Excellence in Coaching. Whereas Churchill Junior High School teachers and students participate in the 2017 New Jersey Science Olympiad Competition, the Science Olympiad Competition provides an arena for students to exchange in STEM learning and building activities. Students form teams to study a specific problem and then compete at the regional and state level against their peers. Whereas two teachers at Churchill Junior High School received an award of excellence in coaching. And whereas these accomplishments, a tribute to the dedication and commitment of students and staff, has brought local and state recognition to the schools, the district, and the community. Now therefore be it resolved, the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends our teachers for this outstanding achievement. our teachers for this outstanding achievement. Alexandra Bartfield. Beth Logan Chobe. Next is the New Jersey Science League Biology Individual State Placement, where as one ninth-grade student from Churchill Junior High School ranked first in state as an individual competitor in the New Jersey Science League Biology Overall Competition. All public and private secondary schools in New Jersey are invited to participate in the New Jersey Science League, a competition that exists of four 50-minute written exams in seven content areas, starting in January and finishing in April. And whereas this honor, a tribute to the student's motivation, determination, and commitment, has brought local and state recognition to Churchill Junior High School, the district, and the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Lucy Zhao and her teachers for this outstanding achievement. Is Lucy here? Teacher advisor Maria Fichi. Okay, excellent. Congratulations to everyone. And you'll notice also that some of the same teachers come up for various different awards, and there's no mistake to that. That's a tribute to all the work that they're doing with our kids, too. This is hard work, getting to where they got at nationals, state, and local levels is incredible. So, congratulations to all this evening's recipients, and we're gonna call a short recess.
It's a little warm in here, or is it me?
It's you.
All right, next is the superintendent's report, Dr. Valesky.
Thank you, President Simmons, and let me start off by introducing the board once again to our newest administrator, our Director of Special Education, Renee Davis.
Hey, Ms. Davis. In a very important position you've filled, too. Welcome.
Glad to have her. So, good evening, everyone that's left. Today I had the pleasure of participating in the Lawrence Brook Walk to School Day. It was great to see so many families and staff participate. Keep Middlesex Moving Incorporated is Middlesex County's nonprofit transportation management association. KMM is affiliated with the Middlesex County Improvement Authority. On Thursday, June 1st, I held my third State of the District address. I would like to thank all the families and staff members who took the time to come out. Special thanks to the East Brunswick Education Association and the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association who partnered with me in this event. On Monday, June 5th, I had the pleasure of attending the Waxman Forum Poster Session at Rutgers University in New Brunswick. The Waxman Student Scholars Program is a year-long program that begins each summer with a three-week seminar in Laboratory Institute. This program provides opportunities for high school students and their biology teachers to participate in and contribute to an authentic research project in molecular biology and bioinformatics. It continues back at each high school during the academic year when more students can become involved, and concludes the following spring with the Waxman Forum Poster Session. I'm proud of all our EBHS students who participated. Senior Awards Night was celebrated on Monday, June 5th, here at the high school. Over 500 award winners were presented to our graduating seniors for excellence in academics, athletics, the arts, and citizenship. The EBEA and EBPSA, in conjunction with our Joint Retirement Committee, planned a district-wide celebration for all East Brunswick Public School retirees at the Palms Plaza on Wednesday, June 7th. As always, a good time was had by all. This year we have 30 retirees from a variety of positions, including teachers, school aides, maintenance staff, and school nurses. We wish them a wonderful retirement. Also that evening, the Middlesex County Education Association honored Dr. Dana Zimbicki, President of the EBEA, at their Friends of Public Education Dinner. It was a big surprise to her. With a Frederick L. Hip Achievement Award in Leadership, congratulations to Doctors Zimbicki. I appreciated seeing her genuinely surprised. At the high school, Athletics Awards Banquet held on Thursday, June 8th, at the Grand Marquis in Old Bridge. Approximately 150 awards and almost $8,000 in monetary scholarships were given to our student athletes. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the many individuals and organizations who so generously sponsored awards for both the Senior Awards Night and the Athletic Banquet. On Tuesday, June 13th, I gathered all East Brunswick Public School employees together for a mandatory staff training, I'm sorry, meeting, not training. I shared concerns raised from our students about alleged bias-related incidents in our schools. This message was shared with staff to both raise awareness and start a conversation around this topic. Throughout next school year, we will dedicate a large amount of time and resources to ensure a bias-free environment in our schools. Congratulations to our Athletes of the Month for May. And I apologize, we don't have the video in this room, but we would be showing you the video of all of their names. Congratulations to Mariah Schumet for her sectional championship in the 400-meter hurdles. She competed at the meet of champions along with other team qualifiers. Congratulations to all of our spring sports teams for an amazing season and for their sportsmanship. We are proud of the way you represented East Brunswick Public Schools. Go Bears! Parents, if your child hasn't already done so in school, have them join the East Brunswick Public Library's Summer Reading Program. The research is clear, children who do better, or children who read do better in school. Superintendent could read, he'd do better, too. So make sure your child is a reader this summer. East Brunswick High School's final exams will continue tomorrow, June 16th, and will end on June 20th. Churchill exams begin tomorrow, June 16th, and will end on June 21st. Exam days at the high school in Churchill will be single-session days. All students will have single-session days with no lunch on Wednesday, June 21st, and Thursday, June 22nd. High school graduation. And the last day of school for students is Thursday, June 22nd. Graduation will take place at the Sun National Bank Center in Trenton at 11:00 a.m. 698 students will receive the coveted East Brunswick Public Schools diploma. The entire educational community contributed to the success of each and every student. The last day of school for teachers is Friday, June 23rd, and I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe summer. Thank you.
Wow, thanks. Next is the Go to the Cause for the Public, where members of the public are invited to express themselves on school-related matters of concern. Members are invited, or reminded that there is five-minute limitation, and to address individual student-staff issues, first addressed with the appropriate administrator. Anyone wish to address the board? Seeing no one, I will close the public portion. I'm gonna ask for a motion on this evening's agenda in total, except for Board of Education, Item 7, which we will move to after closed session if we take action on that item. May I have a motion for the rest?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Becker, second by Mrs. Shaw. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Shaw.
I have some questions. This is, my first question is on Student Services Agenda Item 2, where we have a listing of student service providers. I'm actually looking at page, gee, really? 383? Is that what that says? It does.
Yeah, it does.
Okay, but anyway, my question is regarding a provider for respite caregiver services, and I was wondering under what circumstances the school district would be responsible for respite caregiver services?
Ms. Davis, would you mind?
I'm sorry, I don't have that page in front of me.
Oh, okay.
If in the event a student is hospitalized, that might be...
Yeah, there you go. We should be able to turn that mic on.
Sorry. In the event that a student is hospitalized, I'm not sure if that falls under that category.
Yeah, I'm really not sure either, Vanessa. I just thought it was an odd provision for us to be responsible for.
Nothing I put you on the spot your first...
Right, exactly.
They all have headers, so...
So it falls under nursing services, so if a student has nursing services by way of their IEP, we're responsible for offering those services to the family and to the student. But I can certainly give you more, look into this and give you more information and get back to you. These are providers that are generally approved. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're using them. We've probably used them in the past and foresee the need to use them in the future. But I will certainly look into this exact provider, just to give you a little feedback. But we do have students.
And it actually isn't even like who is providing the service, it's just that I think it's an unusual responsibility for the school district to have. And so that's really, you know, where my question comes in.
Understood. And any service, and sometimes it is also medically related, that impedes a child's ability to receive education, is the responsibility of the school district. So in this case, if a student has a particular medical disability, a medical issue, we're charged with providing the related services to support the student's educational program. But I will get back to you about it specifically.
I do understand that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I...
I know, but she's good to know me.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you. I had one other question. This one is on our Personnel Agenda, and I was taking a look at the stipends for boys' lacrosse and girls' lacrosse, and there is a differential there. And I'm wondering, is that because of the number of years that that coach has in the position? Or are we just not paying our female coaches as much as our male coaches?
We actually don't differentiate by boys' or girls' sports or such. There are factors, and you're correct, the factor is years of experience. So that's what I suspect, but I'll double-check for you. But it, when a coach comes in, we look at their previous experience and try to place them at an appropriate level. And in the back of the salary guide, which I'll send you a copy, there is a, it does show where the breakdown is for years of experience.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else for the discussion? Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes, except extension on Item 3, contract prints and review.
Noted. Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes, with the extension on Item 2, purchase order 1706244.
Noted. Mrs. Reese. Mr. Seeler. Mrs. Shaw.
Yes, with the exception of the minutes from December 15th, on which I abstain.
And President Simmons.
Yes. Motion carries. All right, any committee reports, information items, Go to the Cause for the board. Mrs. Lacks. Mrs. Lacks.
Quickly, community programs had our last advisory meeting on May 23rd, and I will just give you a couple of quick highlights. A new position of Physical Education Activity Leader was created, so they can have more scheduled and structured physical activity in the after-school program. Homework tutors are also reaching out to kids, so that we're using the time more productively, so the children that need a little bit of extra help can get that during that time. Some new exciting programs were added, including Rutgers Creative Movement, choir, visual arts. They're now actually built into the AS program, so the kids that sign up are not paying an additional charge for that. The processing of time sheets was updated to become more efficient for our staff. Our enrollment is up by 100 students from the same time last year. The community programs handbook is online and updated. There will be a kindergarten readiness academy this summer, which will help some of the children transitioning from the preschool into the kindergarten in the fall. And they're in the process of creating an app for community programs for all the smartphone users out there. More trainings will be going on this summer. We have some more exciting offerings coming in the enrichment area. Speed and agility, chess, we talked about certain things like some additional sports and percussion, which I'm excited about. And they are going to be sending evaluations to the ELA parents to make sure that we are, as usual, doing the best we can for the parents in this program. So, everyone has a full listing here, but those are some of the exciting highlights.
Okay, thanks, Mrs. Lacks. Mrs. Becker.
A few things. First of all, I wanted to thank all the staff, administrators, and residents who served on all our committees this year. It was a tremendous amount of time and personal sacrifice, and we greatly appreciate it. For the committee that I chair, the Curriculum Committee, first of all, I'd like to thank Debbie Gulick for doing an absolutely fantastic job of presenting us with really exciting, challenging things in the committee. The ideas, the things we're implementing are so exciting, and you give us a great preview of them, and I thank you and thank all the people who served on it. Not a personal note, but I happened to be in northern Jersey this weekend at an event, and I ran into somebody who used to live in East Brunswick that I knew, and they teach in an English department in a college in New Jersey. It's not Rutgers. But I'm not supposed to say which one or his or her name. The point is, when this person asked me if I still lived in East Brunswick and if I was still on the board, and I said yes, she said, "You know, I can always tell the kids who come from East Brunswick School System, East Brunswick High School, in my freshman English classes, because they're the ones who know how to write a paper, who understand the whole concept of research, and don't just rely on spell check or a thesaurus." We've heard this before, but I think it bears repeating. We do a superb job in English, from kindergarten on, in all our subjects, but this is not the first time we have heard a teacher, a college professor in an English department in a high school, say that they can pick out the kids from East Brunswick without knowing anything about them but just seeing their papers. So, I think that's a wonderful statement on our staff and our students. Just wanted to share.
All right, thanks. Anyone else? Ruthie.
I'm just gonna give my last Ruthie report. So, I know my sister is in Hammershold, so I think yesterday she showed me her Relay for Life shirt, so that was really cool to see. I went to the Relay for Life event on June 10th, so it was really nice to see the whole township come out and support such a good cause. Also, one of the most monumental events in a high schooler's life, prom, happened on June 2nd, so that was really fun. We got some really good pictures.
We have some pictures, yeah.
I have them. And also, as Dr. Valesky stated, senior awards are on June 5th, and I just wanted to say something about that. I think I really appreciate the awards, because it's nice to know that you're being acknowledged for something that you've worked hard for, for those other four years in high school, or for those 12 years that you've been in school. So, it was great to receive those scholarships, but also know that you were being acknowledged from your school for your hard work. So, thank you so much for doing that. And senior send-off was on June 7th, so that was really exciting, and the hypnotist was amazing, so whoever organizes that, please make sure he comes back again for the other senior send-offs, 'cause he was really good. And I just want to say that I've been very honored to serve on this board, and I wanted to thank Dr. Manila for giving me such an opportunity, and to the entire board for supporting me. It's just been an amazing experience, and I'm gonna be 10 minutes away, so I'm probably gonna be coming back every other Thursday, so... So it's not the last you're going to see of me. And yeah, and I can't wait till graduation. Hopefully, Dr. Valesky, I'm graduating.
It would be hard to keep you from graduating now.
And I know Kush would, just want to introduce himself and say a few words.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kush Mather, and I'll be the new student board liaison for the 2017-18 school year. I'm really looking forward to representing the student body in future Board of Education meetings. I've really appreciated all the work that the Board of Education has done in the last few years in furthering the success of our district and our students, and I'm really excited about now being able to contribute to that process. In the last few years of high school, I've participated in clubs such as the Future Business Leaders of America, Model UN, Science League, National Honor Society, Math Honor Society. And through these large clubs, I've really witnessed the great accomplishments that our students have been able to achieve. And I really do think that that is thanks to our teachers and our staff and our administrators, and of course, the Board of Education. So thank you for this opportunity, and I'm really looking forward to meeting all of you and fulfilling my responsibility.
All right. Anything else from your perspective before you sign off?
I think he's good.
Okay. That's all we needed. Well, Ruthie, it is, again, it has been a pleasure to have you here. We will miss you. But we'll see you soon, I'm sure. All right, excellent. Any other Good of the Cause or information items? Seeing none, we do have a need for closed session to discuss the employees listed in the agenda, so may I have a motion to go into closed session, after which we may reconvene in public portion. Motion by Mr. Seeler. Second by Mrs. Becker. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Good night, everyone.